Welcome to the Fall River School Committee Debate sponsored by Fred TV and Durfee Student Government. I'm Pamela Nickerson, and I will serve as moderator. The questions that our candidates will be asked originated, were formulated, and decided on by our student panel. Please rise at this moment to salute the flag to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to introduce our students first. Starting on my right, questions will be asked by our student body president, Jack Rio, Jasleen Martinez, our senior class president, to my left, Madeline Hargraves, our senior class treasurer, and Leisha Boone, our senior class secretary. Thank you. Candidates, I want to thank all of you for being here. You are seated in the order as you pulled your papers to run for office. I'll introduce first, starting to my right, Mr. Randy Dudek, Mr. Colin Dias, Mr. Kevin Aguirre, Mr. Mark Malacon, Mr. John Sylvia, and to this side now, Mr. Emmanuel, excuse me, Mrs. Anna Riley, Mr. Emmanuel Monas, Ms. Chanelle Stewart, Mr. Shiv Thakor was invited, he's not present tonight, Mr. Thomas Corey. Our plan for the night will be as follows. We discussed this prior, just prior to the broadcast with our candidates. There will be no opening statements. Our panel will ask questions in the order in which they are seated. Candidates, you will respond in the order in which you are seated. You will have just 60 seconds to answer. For example, Jack, you will ask the first question to Mr. Dudek. Mr. Dudek, you have one minute to answer that question. Then in order, the candidates will have one minute to respond to that same question. Jasleen will have the second question and will be directed to Mr. Dias. Make sense? Okay. Our timekeepers, please take note. They're in the front row. They will show a 30-second warning and then a stop, and at the end of the night, you'll have one minute each for a closing statement. All right, students, I hope that you reflect on this experience and take something away from it. It's very important that we all foster an interest in government. Jack, I'd like you to direct the first question, please, now to Mr. Dudek. One minute.
Absolutely. Now, I will graduate in June 2026. I'd like to know more about you. So what experiences or qualifications have prepared you to serve on the school committee?
That's a really good question. Thank you. I'm actually a parent of two middle schoolers at Morton, two seventh graders. I actually went to school to attempt to become an educator, ended up going down a different road, but that's a different story. My family moved to Fall River, this is my daughter's fifth year in the district, and as a parent of two students with differing, I guess, the ability to grasp educational stuff quickly, I've seen both the need for what the school needs to do for students who achieve easier than others, see, you know, a wide range of achievement and know that different students have different needs. And I also know from our time here that most of the things that do happen in the school are actually way more positive than I read about in our move here, but at the same time, there is still plenty of room for improvement in a lot of areas, and I hope to help spur that movement forward.
Thank you, Mr. Dudek. Mr. Dias, please, one minute.
I appreciate the question, Jack. And, I mean, where can I start? I've joined, since I've joined the committee in June of 2024, you can ask anyone. I've been very intense. I show up to meetings that I'm not even a member of. I put in the hard work each and every day. I ask the questions, both behind the scenes and on the stage, so we could get to the bottom of the issues that face this district. I'm 25 years old. I serve currently in the district myself, trying to get some more education and more experience, and I'm learning every single day, and I believe I've earned a vote, one of six votes of the electorate, for another two full years on the school committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Aguirre, please, one minute.
Thank you. I first got involved in politics over 20 years ago because I just wanted to make a difference. Didn't know exactly what I was going to do, but I did know I wanted to give back to the community and make a difference. And lo and behold, education is something that has become part of my life. I work every day full-time in education now, which is a little bit different, so I have two different perspectives. But ultimately, when you work in education, or you serve on the school committee, you have to do it as like a vocation, something that you truly believe in. And I do believe in education. I think we can go to great places with education for our students, but you have to want it. You have to have passion for the work. I do have that passion. I believe I make a difference each and every day on the school committee, and I do think that when they look out in the audience or the people at home, we have so many dedicated educators that are doing that work, that it being a vocation to them, and it means a lot to them, it has to mean a lot to us as well.
Thank you, Mr. Aguirre and Mr. Malacon, please.
Sure. I think it's a great question, and it's one that I kind of hold near and dear to my heart. So I was born and raised in Fall River, 1977, and I grew up in Roland Green, seems like 1,000 years ago. But I, you know, I went on to play football at the University of Miami, and then transferred to Alabama, two of the largest universities in the country, or the world for that matter, as far as football is concerned. So naturally, I went there. I played quarterback. You know, leadership was something that just came natural to me, and I liked to lead by example. So I was probably one of the only guys that stayed for both summer sessions during my tenure there. And I think that meant a lot to the coaches, and it gave me opportunities other guys didn't have. I have two children. One is 10, one is eight, Brock and Colton. One has an IEP, and one breezes right through work like it's nothing. And it's not to say that the youngest is brighter, just the oldest one needs more guidance and more direction.
Thank you. Mr. Malacon, time's up. Thank you. Mr. Sylvia, please.
Yeah. I'm a Durfee graduate, probably long before you guys graduated here, 1982. Probably your parents weren't even born, some of them, but I've been very involved in my community, part of my neighborhood group, Niagara Neighborhood Association, and we've done many things for our neighborhood, had cookouts, put banners up, advocated for playground equipment, basketball courts. We wrote a grant for the splash pad that's currently at Pulaski Park. And I've also been part of the Fall River Street Tree planting program, also for the last 20 years, and we planted trees all over the city, roughly 1,000, because at the time, the city didn't have money for that. I also am retired from the federal government. I have 40 years' experience as an HR professional, so I think that kind of can bring something to the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Sylvia. We move over to Ms. Riley, please.
So this is my 32nd year in education. I've been a teacher, a principal, an assistant superintendent, and for 13 years, a superintendent. I taught middle school, I taught high school. Education's been a part of my adult life, really more than full-time, because in addition to that, I have six children, five Durfee grads, and a current sophomore here at Durfee. And finally, with all of my children grown, except my one sophomore, I feel like I have the time to be able to dedicate to public service. I have worked with school committees for 13 years. I understand what it takes for a successful board to add value to the school district, and how we can best support the staff, the students, and the families of the public school district. So I'm excited to be a candidate, and I hope that I'll be considered for one of your votes on Election Day.
Thank you for that. Mr. Monas, please.
Yes, thank you. My name is Emmanuel Monas. I have two kids in the four public schools. I used to be the maintenance facilities director. I've been part of the school system for a little while. I feel that I bring a lot to the table, knowing the facilities and being part of every school. I want to advocate for the students, teachers, and I want to do what's right, and I want to take on, you know, important issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Stewart.
Hello, my name is Chanelle. I've been coming to school committee meetings probably about 15 years, sitting in the back, same spot, same area. Joe Martins was my man. I used to come here and sit here, listen to him talk, so I've been doing this for a while, so it wouldn't be something new. I have two children. I are on IPs currently, and I am the president of the CPAC, so I'm already involved. I talk to a lot of parents. They already call me, ask me a lot of things. I have my MBA, so I feel like I know, can help a lot with the budget and a lot of stuff that goes on with that, so I feel like I'm qualified.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Corey, please.
Yes, so I'm a Durfee grad, Jack, and my four kids are Durfee grads. While I was here, I also spent my career as an educator right here at Durfee High School. So as a graduate and as a career educator, I was closely involved with student government and ran two award-winning programs, One Earth, One People Under the Sun, and Peaceful Coalition. So I was working with kids so closely and driving them forward towards success. It's my mission in my life to be an educator, and as I retired, I felt like, here's my time to give back even a little bit more. I'm looking for my third term on the school committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. Okay, that's round one. Thank you very much. Round two begins with questions asked by Jasleen Martinez. Mr. Dias, you're up first.
So we understand the need for evidence-based curriculums, yet many teachers feel they are best when they have flexibility in the classroom. How will you help support teachers, meet requirements, but still have the freedom to design inspirational lessons?
Sure. No, thank you for the question, and I know, I realize there have been some teachers who have come down before to the committee and voiced similar concerns. I believe some of them might even be in the audience today. And I think they bring up a lot of fair points. And again, what I advocate for as a school committee member is when, for example, when we're talking about curriculum, that goes before a curriculum subcommittee. I mean, the subcommittee which discusses instructional, which discusses curriculum. And when we have those discussions, it's important that we have voices from all different sides. I've been advocating for, and I'm looking to push this through if I'm re-elected on the committee, is to have members from educators come on down and speak directly to the committee on their points of view and what they would like to see different. I don't think we do a good job of that, and hearing the voices of all of our educators, and that's something we need to improve on. And the first good way to start is to give them more voice at the subcommittee level so we can understand and make an informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dias. Mr. Aguirre?
So curriculum is very important to learning. So we have a situation in Fall River and in most urban cities where academic achievement is not where it needs to be. So a consistent curriculum is quite important, but at the same time that we pay hundreds of thousands of dollars for the curriculum, there has to be some flexibility along the way for teachers to be able to modify their lessons and do different things that they can feel is going to be better than the curriculum. But ultimately, as a school district, we cannot measure if everyone's doing all kinds of different things. So the curriculum has to be a framework, but the teachers should have some autonomy to move off of that curriculum every now and again when there is something. But ultimately, the bottom line is, the standards that the ESE sets for what a student needs to learn in each grade needs to be implemented in one way or another. I think a combination of solid curriculum along with some flexibility is the way I would go.
Thank you. Mr. Malacon, please. You're third to answer the question.
So I was always thought that you're either part of the solution or part of the problem. And I see that teachers, and I have many friends that are teachers and administrators, that they need support. And I'm truly in favor of supporting them, thinking outside the box and doing what they feel is necessary to teach a child, because every child learns differently. So for me, I was one of those kids, and I had teachers that reached me, and it wasn't always conventional. I do believe in evidence-based education. However, there has to be some leeway or autonomy, as Kevin said, to let them teach and do the things that they need to do to reach a child. So that's basically how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvia, please.
Yeah, as far as the evidence-based curriculum, who is, you know, putting that together? So I think that we have to look at that. But I can tell you, when I went to Durfee, there were three or four teachers that I remember today, because I wanted to go to school. I wanted to go to their class. So I think we got to make, you know, this, for, that kids who want to come to class, are excited to come to class, and I think we've kind of been hurt with the whole MCAS system. We were teaching to a test, and we're still teaching to a test. So I'd like to see us go away from that, now that it's not a requirement for graduation. Maybe that's something that we can push away and not teach to a test, because not everybody is a great test taker, for sure. So I really like to see us do that and get a curriculum in that excites the kids and they want to go to school.
Thank you for that. Ms. Riley, you're fifth, pleased to answer.
Sure. So I think evidence-based practices and curriculum are important because of, the standards are a requirement. So that's not an option. We have required standards, and so we have to make sure those are covered. The curriculum is just a tool. It's to make sure that teachers have that tool in their toolbox to pull out when they need to address a standard. But I know the best teachers infuse that with their own creativity and engagement, engagement to get students excited and interested in the learning. I have to say, I was spoiled, because I was a chemistry teacher here at Durfee. And so when you teach chemistry, you can make lots of things fun, because you can light them up and blow them up and do all of these things. But engagement is what got my students interested, and that helped get them interested in the math and the science behind the information that was given.
Okay. Safely blowing the things up.
Yes, safety. It was safe.
Thank you. Chemistry's fun. Mr. Monas, please, your turn.
Thank you. I agree with everyone up here. I believe our teachers do need more support, and I do believe they have the tools to get it started, but we do have to pick them up and support them in all different ways in the classroom, get them out on field trips, getting them out in the community, supporting them in all different ways, making sure that they have what they need, and we're looking for better ways of doing things. And I just wanted to advocate that every school in the area needs all of us to support them in every way we can.
Okay. Takes a village. Ms. Stewart, please.
So of course, we need to keep the evidence bases. You know, we, obviously, we have to keep that. But this is 2025. These kids are bored. They sit on, you know, their phones at your, and it takes two seconds for them to flip through things. You've got to keep them active. So if a teacher's trying to pull something in to, you know, keep them more active, we have to allow them to try to, you know, get them more. If they have to do something that's going to say, hey, you know, on TikTok, we learned this, these kids are going to quickly, oh, we learned that on TikTok? They're going to figure it out. So you've got to do something. You've got to give them some leeway to be able to do it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Corey.
I taught in the days before MCAS was instituted, and what I noticed with MCAS is that it was not an equitable solution for a gateway city like Fall River. So curriculum-wise, a lot of kids were left in the lurch. And right here at Durfee, they have developed a program of studies. Each and every year, they have to pass that program of studies. It's a growing, and it's an evolving document. It reflects the times, and I feel that it's very robust for the students of the times here at Durfee today versus when I was teaching 25 years ago.
Thank you for that. We go back to our right now. Mr. Dudek.
Thank you, Jasleen. For the past 20, 30 years, and not just in Massachusetts, but across the country, the teaching has been focused on teaching to the test. In Massachusetts, it's been the MCAS, but there's been other tests in other states. It's the same thing pretty much everywhere. Hopefully, now that the MCAS graduation requirement has been taken away, that's going to give us an opportunity in the near future to start moving towards more flexibility in the curriculum, not to get rid of the MCAS, because it's one of many acceptable measurements, but it's also not the be-all, end-all measurement. And hopefully, with it no longer being a graduation requirement, we can use that to start adding more flexibility to the curriculum as a whole.
Thank you. That was round two. Ms. Madeline Hargraves, you will answer, you will ask for question three, directed first to Mr. Aguirre.
Ms. Nickerson?
Yes.
May I just suggest?
Of course you may.
When the students are asking their questions, if they could go right up to the microphone?
Okay.
So we can hear them?
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Some people from outside Fall River have unkind things to say about our city and our schools. Nowhere and no one is perfect, but I feel safe and supported here. So how do we restore our reputation and change the sometimes very negative narrative about Fall River?
So, may I?
Ms. Aguirre?
So I think what happens sometimes in all areas, including in education, is that if we do not make the narrative for people, they will make it for us. And I think we need to do a better job of highlighting the quality things that are happening in the schools. Now, we can be critical, we can make suggestions and the like, but at the end of the day, we need to make a positive narrative of what's happening. There's great young men and women that go to Durfee High School, that graduate from Durfee High School, that do great things, both in the classroom, in, you know, the arts, and we really need to celebrate those things. So I think that's one of the ways that we can do it. If we don't make the narrative, people are going to make it for us.
Mr. Malacon, please.
You know, I agree with Kevin. You really have to set the narrative yourself, and folks are always going to say unkind things about your city, because their city is always better. And being an athlete and a quarterback and taking criticism, I always took it and just used it as fuel to do better. So I feel like, you know, if we can all kind of come together and agree on, you know, certain core principles and giving our faculty and the students the support that they need and really work together, you know, as a team, we can accomplish great things and really change the way people feel about our city. I've always listed Fall River as my hometown, my home city, even when I didn't live here and moved away many, many years later after, you know, in college and, you know, high, I mean, college and beyond in my career. But I always relish this city, and I think people here truly do, and I think we have a lot to offer. So, yeah, I'd just be positive and always, like Kevin said, you know, bring up the positive things that we do.
Okay.
We do a lot of things.
Time is up. Mr. Sylvia?
Yeah, believe it or not, I started back at Durfee in 1978 from Morton, and everybody was like, you're going to Durfee. It's going to be a disaster. You're going to get beat up every day, and this, that, and the other thing. So not much has changed, apparently, from 1978. But I think we have that with any school system. New Bedford, they get a bad rap. Brockton gets a bad rap. Any big city is going to get a bad rap. But I agree with what's been stated earlier, that we have to be an advocate for the city. When you go away somewhere, and I've always had that, even working, I worked in Boston for many years, and people are like, where are you from? I'm like, Fall River, and they're, oh my God, really? How is it there? And I'm like, no, it's really a great place. You've got to come down and check it out. So I think we got to really toot our own horn to change that narrative. Thank you.
Thank you. On to Ms. Riley.
Thank you. I think particularly for, not just our city, but for our public schools, that the public officials who represent us are the first cheerleaders. We have to be the ones who set the positive tone and make sure that we highlight all of the amazing things that are happening in our city and in our district. I told you I had five Durfee grads. They are doing amazing. They had so much opportunity here at Durfee and learned so much. And I watched my sophomore here, and the course selection, the study guide, the course guide that he got to choose from was amazing, just the opportunities. I know working in a smaller district, that I can't even offer all of those opportunities to students. And I don't think we highlight enough all the positive things that come out of each of our schools, even just the little things that happen every day in the classroom to get everyone on board, teachers, principals, the school committee, tweeting, Facebook, Instagram, all of those things, just constantly pushing out those positive messages.
Time is up. Please, thank you. Mr. Monas, please.
Thank you. There's nothing like when your kids get home from school and they have nothing but positive things to say. It picks me up for sure. At the end of the day, we need our schools to be positive. We have to advocate and get out positive feed out to the public, get feedback. That way, we know how people feel and what they're thinking about our schools. Keeping them clean, keeping them, keeping our facilities looking good makes a big difference. And I do believe the kids enjoy coming here, and they really push and strive when we have the proper facilities for them and have all these opportunities for them.
I appreciate that. And Ms. Stewart?
So I agree with everybody. I think we need to promote the positivity. I think that we have a lot of good things that are happening. We just don't promote enough of it. So I can say, we just, I had a CPAC meeting yesterday. We talked about unified sports. There's not a lot of people that know that we have unified sports here. If people knew, like, those things, we need to promote them, put that kind of stuff out there, down to, you know, elementary school basketball, you know, if you promote all the things that's out there, put them out there. Ask the parent, hey, tell me something, you know, that's happened good in your school. Post those little things that they put out there, but keep putting those out there. Guess what? All the news people, they're going to keep posting all those things, because they're going to be overloaded with all that instead of all the negative stuff. You've got to put it out there for them to be able to put it out there.
Thank you. Mr. Corey?
Great question, negative narrative. So negative narrative is fueled by yellow journalism. Yellow journalism means they highlight what's happening negatively instead of positively. How many people are still talking about the fact that Durfee High's marching band was number one in the nation last year, something that we should all be incredibly proud of? Our sports program here at school, the theater program here at school is outstanding, as well as the program of studies for curriculum. But it doesn't get highlighted enough, because our local publications are not bringing that out. They'd rather pick on the negative happenings going on, on daily politics, rather than highlighting what's going on that's really phenomenal with our young kids here at school.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. Back to my right here, Mr. Dudek.
Thank you for the question, Madeline. And I have to admit, five summers ago, I was one of the outsiders you referenced, and I was reading the same online reviews that I know you're referencing. And I've read all of the horror stories. But in all honesty, my family's experience in the Fall River schools has been almost completely positive across the board. And to your point, we need to do things to get that message out there. I regret following Mr. Corey, because I was also going to mention the marching band, where my daughters are actually participating literally right now. But again, he got to there first. But it just underscores the point that as a community, we need to keep broadcasting all of the positives that are going on throughout the entire district to, for lack of a better phrase, flood the news with it so that people know what is going on here.
Okay. Thank you for that. Mr. Dias, finish us up, please.
Thank you. And I'm actually happy Ms. Stewart brought up the unified basketball. I believe they won yesterday, so it's good to bring that up. Again, I think everyone up here, again, loves our city, and we love it so much, we want to go into public service to make it better. That's important. And I am very happy, and again, for the most part, we have a lot of great educators here and a lot of great staff that care about the students and want to make it better. At the same point, and I'm very happy, Madeline, you're having a good experience. I hear from parents of students who say otherwise. I hear from staff members that say they feel scared to speak out on issues. So we have to make sure, as a school committee, we have the appropriate policies in place and the appropriate administration in place to make sure all of our city feels supported. I'll give you two examples. One, we have three high schools in the city. I do not see one individual from student government from RPA or Stone. We got to make sure we support the entire city of Fall River, including Durfee, RPA, Stone, everyone.
That's our time's up. Thank you for that. Ms. Leisha Boone over here will direct the fourth question to Mr. Malacon. And let me just say, you are our student ambassadors. We talked about this while we were working on the program and working on questions. So thank you to all four of you. Leisha, please.
A youth risk behavior survey from 2023 found about half of girls in the United States report feeling sad or hopeless for at least two consecutive weeks. For boys, that number is around 30%. Rates are even higher for LGBTQ plus students, children of color, and children who live in poverty. What supports will you put in place to improve teen mental health?
Well, that's a great question. I actually feel like I'm not even qualified to answer that. However, I'll do my best. I think that just listening, being in open, being open and listening to folks helps them get past those type of things. Again, going back to my youth, being an athlete in high school, I was a starting quarterback, definitely a star of the school, and everyone knew it but me. I was probably the loneliest and saddest kid in the whole school, and I didn't have anyone to talk to about those things. So I had to work those things out for myself, and I truly pray. And with my own children, I tell them, please be open, honest, tell me everything you feel. I think that it's extremely important for us to listen and be a guide, you know, and let them know the things that we've been through, because I was abused as a child by my babysitter, growing up, very, very, very young, but I distinctly remember it.
Time is up. Thank you for sharing. Mr. Sylvia?
I really wish we had more time.
We will have more time at the end.
I'll stay after and talk.
Perfect. We'll catch you up then. Mr. Sylvia, please.
Yep. Thanks for the question. And I believe COVID has really affected kids. I mean, it's affected adults, but it's really affected kids, what happened during that period. But I think, you know, just listening, I don't know how much.
But I think, you know, just listening, I don't know how much we could, you know, we can do on, on the committee, but I, you know, whatever, what it would work, I would be willing to go with. I think a lot of it is just, you know, reaching out there. I'm sure there are kids, I was very quiet when I was younger, I'm sure there are kids there that people can kind of can, re-friend them and join clubs, that helped me, joining different clubs in high school. So, and then just, if, you know, if kids do need help, you know, reach out, have them reach out or reach out for them. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Over to the other side of the room, please. Ms. Riley.
Sure. I think it's really important that every student be treated with respect and dignity by their peers and by the adults that they interact with. I think that's where we begin. And then I think as a school committee, it's our job to make sure the district has resources to support our students. And not, that's through providing mental health counselors in our schools. I know the district already uses Cartwheel, which is an online service for mental health. I would suggest there are other things we can do. We can train all of our staff in mental health first aid, it's an investment that pays off because it helps prepare our teachers to notice and address when they see a concern in their students. They're seeing their students every day, so they're able to recognize those signs. And there are other opportunities out there that we can write grants for that can support students in other ways in addition to the ones we have, and I think those are just tools we have to keep exploring to find the ones that fit for our students.
Thank you for that. Mr. Monas, please.
Thank you. Our students are under a lot of pressure these days, more than ever. With social media, school is, everything else is going, that's going on in the world, it's a lot to handle. We need to make sure that they have someone to talk to and the support that they need to get them through tough times. That means having enough counselors and students, adjustment counselors. I would want to hear from the Saks to see what their students need, and at the end of the day, if we want our students to learn, they've, they've got to feel supported and cared for.
Okay. Thank you for that. Mr. Monas, Ms. Stewart.
So, there's a lot. Everybody needs to, you know, be respected. We can just say that, because you know, it's the catchphrase, everybody, you know, well, they gotta do this, they gotta do that. But it takes a lot, you know, kids are kids, and everybody loves to throw, you know, oh, you know, they just said that, it's okay, and people brush stuff off, and it's not just to be brushed off. So I can say, as a school committee person, we can put things into, you know, policy, but all I can, my suggestion that I can give to students is, get into a group, get into basketball, get into, you know, after-school programs, get into things that you'll be with other students that will help you to find your core group. Because we can help you to get into all those things, but I'm just trying to help you, I'm not trying to do something as a school committee person, I'm just trying to tell you as a person. Try to find your, your core group.
Time is up. Ms. Stewart, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Just don't be sorry. We're passionate about all of this, we all are, that's why we're here. Ms. Corey, please.
Great question, dear. So for 10 years, when I worked here at Durfee, I was the advisor to the United Cultures Club, and that was preceding the formation of the LGBTQ Club, which happened as a result of what, the work that we were doing. The work that we were doing with students was to inspire dignity and respect across lines, and I ran assemblies here at school, so I hear you loud and clear. It all lends to student safety. And here at Durfee, we have the Evolve metal detectors, and now we have Yarn DePouches. So we're trying to enhance practical safety as well. But, but like Ms. Stewart said, get involved, join a club, become associated with your classmates, it's the best way to get through high school, and I'm proud of my past service.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. Back to this side of the room. Mr. Dudek, please.
Thank you, Laisha. As it's been said, this is a lot for a 60-second answer.
It sure is.
But I personally know the struggles of depression, I've seen it in me and in at least one of my children, I, I know what it, what it looks like and what it feels like. And I do also know that it seems to be growing since the COVID lockdowns, and it's not, doesn't seem to be getting better at any point in time. As a school committee member, I would support any resources and efforts to add more support for the students and for the staff as well, to try to head this off as best as we can. I do also believe, you'd mentioned the minorities, I believe that the diversity of Fall River is one of the things that has always made this city great, and that this diversity should not only be protected, but also celebrated, which is gonna help make everyone feel like they are part of the community and help, you know, a sense of belonging.
Thank you. Mr. Dias.
Thank you for the question. And I think Ms. Riley actually really touched upon what, on the issues, and what we can do as a, as a school committee, as a collaborative body, and then, and as individual members, is we as adults need to be the role models for our children and for our students when we're displaying that on camera out to the public. So it starts with leadership from the top, and going into our roles is making sure we have the appropriate policies in place and asking the appropriate questions when curriculum comes up, when different programs come up for our approval, making sure they're best adequately supporting all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And Mr. Aguirre, please.
So we need to provide appropriate and comprehensive mental health supports, and they need to be in place in all schools. And the reality of it is that we have to start at the youngest grades. The information that we are, we're seeing nowadays that at a younger and younger age, students are already struggling with mental health. And if you don't get that early, it's gonna exacerbate and get worse and worse as the years go on. So we definitely need to start with our younger students, we need to have proper staffing, which I do think that we've done a, a good job of hiring professionals to come in and do that. We bring in outside agencies to run groups for students that are needed, so I do think that we're doing a lot of things in the schools to provide support for our kids. But we also can't forget the families in Fall River. Families are struggling in Fall River. We don't have proper amount of jobs that are good quality paying jobs. We have people working two and three and four jobs, and they have their own mental health challenges. And when a family struggles, our students struggle. So I think we can do more to help our families and work on economic development as well.
Thank you. We start round five now with a question asked by Jack Rio to Mr. Sylvia. Please use the mic. You can move it over.
That's fine. How's that go? Yeah, that's good. All right. How do you plan to stay connected with students, educators, and schools? Will you be able to visit schools during the day to see firsthand what policies are and are not working?
Okay, thanks for the question. Yes, I, I'd really like to do that. I'm retired, so I have the time during the day to do that. So, you know, you hear a lot of stories from different people, and I, I like to see things firsthand. So I, I would, I would love to do that. I would, almost went to the Pace Center, but it was kind of too early in the season there to be bothering them, but, but yeah, I definitely like to see. I did, in the past, I did junior achievement, I volunteered. So I went into a few other schools, and you really don't know what's happening until you go in there. So, so yeah, I will definitely do that and try to attend as many as possible.
Thank you for that, Mr. Sylvia. Ms. Riley, please.
Sure. So, I would not be able to come regularly, I'm not retired, not yet, so I do have a full-time position, and it's in schools, I'm a superintendent in Bristol Warren, and I'll tell you, as a superintendent, I spend a lot of time in my schools, and I think that is an important way to know what's going on and what's happening, both with our students and with the teachers. So I would try to use some of my vacation time perhaps to do some of that work, but I think just as important is showing up for after-school events, coming to clubs, coming to sporting events, meeting with students. In my current district, I have a superintendent advisory representative of students who are at the high school, just like all of you, and I meet with them once a month to hear about what they're thinking. What do they love about their school? What are they worried about? What would they like to see happen at their school? And we work together to try to make those things happen. So my goal would be to stay connected by taking those opportunities to come to events, but also to reach out and meet with students and teachers and hear how they feel about what's happening in our schools.
Thank you. Mr. Monas, please.
Yes, I think it's very important that we should be part of the school system and everything else, but at the end of the day, I would not want to interrupt their learning and their curriculum and, like Mrs. Riley stated, being part of the sports, being part of different programs after school, and being involved just to get the positivity out and picking up our students positively and just being able to be part of it and having them know that we are here for them, no matter what, but to be here during the day while they're trying to learn, and of course, I'm not retired, so I couldn't really do that. That would be a problem for me also, but first thing is first, learning is number one, and everything else will fall into play once we have the time.
I appreciate that. Ms. Stewart.
Yes, I already come into a lot of schools, I volunteer, do some stuff, so yes, I can be in when I need to be. But I also have been in a classroom, and I know what it feels like to have, you know, school committee come in, it shakes up the classroom, so I don't know that that's something that would necessarily need to happen often. So I don't know that I would say it would happen often, but would I come in to help and ask questions or do something, you know, necessarily with a principal, not necessarily jump into a classroom? Absolutely. Am I available? Yes, I can be available, I can make myself available whenever, I just don't know that going in and out of classrooms often is gonna be helpful to students.
All right. Mr. Corey.
So Jack, as a school committee member, I have, I pride myself on regular school visitations, and when that happens, we always inform the school that we're gonna be there, so it's not a surprise thing, they're expecting us. And in my tours of so many of the schools in the district, I get on the floor with the kids, especially at the elementary, they're on carpets, they're doing their schoolwork, I wanna see what they're doing cognitively, I wanna see how they're thinking, how they're processing, because learning and watching them at that level helps us to formulate the policy that we need to on the school committee. Just last week, I spent more than two hours at RPA, saying hello to all the teachers, supporting them, and high-fiving so many of the kids in the corridors, just trying to spread good news, good vibes. So that's a great question, yeah, I really enjoy staying connected.
Mr. Dudek.
Thanks, Jack. I'm actually already connected, I'm a member of the Morton PTO right now, and I do volunteer with the marching band as much as I can. I do pledge, if I am elected, to have all of my communication methods open to not just the students and the parents, but to the community as a whole, to make sure all of their needs are being listened to and addressed as best as they can be. I wouldn't, you know, be in a position to regularly pop in unannounced in the middle of school days, but if there was ever a situation where with a little bit of advanced planning, my presence was needed or requested, I could absolutely make that happen. But outside of that, I would absolutely plan on attending as many extracurricular events as, as possible, just to make sure everyone knows that I, I actually care about what's going on here.
Okay. Mr. Dias.
Thank you, and I really liked the question. Like some individuals on the stage as well, I also have a full-time position in the school district as well. However, currently, like, right now, I'm trying to also visit some schools, like, try, like, in between that period where maybe some schools end maybe later, my, my time usually ends a little bit earlier. So, but through my year and a half on the committee, I visited schools when I could, many schools, and I also like to visit schools specifically, it's nice to go in for a tour. I feel like when you go in for like an official tour, just a tour around, you don't really get to communicate that much because a lot of students, I mean, a lot of teachers are obviously teaching. I like to go in sometimes when there's like a specific issue that needs to be addressed, just to get like a hands-on knowledge for, idea, for example, RPA is going through an issue with asbestos, we received an $80,000 fine, I went with superintendent and the director of maintenance, and we toured the situation, and thankfully, we have some plans in place to address that.
Thank you for that. Time is up. Mr. Aguirre, please.
As others has mentioned, I do work full-time in a school, so visits are definitely hard for me. When I wasn't working in a school, I was in schools a little more often, I participated in a lot of after-school activities and school councils and the, and the like. So there's various ways that you can do it, but the key to me is just listening, listening to all the stakeholders, that includes students, that includes staff, that includes families, and having, being responsive and communicate regularly with them. I can't tell you the number of emails that we get from parents or concerned staff, and responding to them, asking the information so that we can follow up with the central administration to try to figure out what's going on is, is definitely paramount, and I think that's one of the most important pieces. In addition, we utilize subcommittees, each member of the committee is gonna be on several subcommittees. Those subcommittee meetings should be held regularly so that we can get the updates that are needed, and if there's things that need to change, we can make sure that those changes are in place.
Thank you for that. Okay, question six will come from Jasleen Martinez.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't get to answer that.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. Malicon.
No, that's okay.
Go right ahead.
Oh, all right. So staying connected to me is of paramount importance, especially in a position like this, and if I were fortunate enough to be elected, I would definitely take into consideration heavily the teacher's feedback, the student's feedback. I would be available for any student, any teacher, to voice their opinions or concerns. In fact, I think that's probably one of the greatest attributes, is that I'm, I'm able and willing to listen. I'm very good at my job, so I can come and go as, as I need to, being a project manager, but, yeah, I, I actually, I, I relish the idea of being able to come here and see the kids in action and really interact with them, that's, that's right in my wheelhouse. And I think that character is built truly while no one's looking, and that's sort of the times when no one's really looking, you're not, you know, up on a stage like this, you're in there and you're doing the things that you're supposed to do to support them, so it's really important. We need to support the, the arts as well as sports and be a part of, sorry, be a part of that. Thank you.
Okay. Jasleen Martinez, you'll take it away with question six.
So this question's a little bit, not like personal, but as an Hispanic individual, does it sound a little bit? Oh, is it answered? Oh, this way, sorry, sorry. Sorry, I thought I was answering this way. When you were growing up, what were you taught about race and culture? How can me, you, and our family and friends grow and learn together to make our city more aware?
So, my parents immigrated here from the Azores, so I was the first person to be born here in the United States. My parents chose Fall River because it was a place with lots of opportunity to find work and build a, build a home for themselves. I started school, kindergarten, I didn't speak a word of English. Even though I was born here, we didn't speak English at home, I lived with my grandparents and my parents, and so going to school and learning to speak English and learning all of the things that the other students had to learn, you know, took a little longer than what it would take for most students, but it also helped me to appreciate differences in culture and to appreciate that everyone comes with their own gifts. So maybe I didn't speak English, but I knew a lot about being Portuguese and I knew a lot about my culture. And I think that helps me to understand and be supportive of students who come from other places and come from other cultures, because we have to appreciate our differences because that's what makes us who we are. Fall River is the, the melting pot, just like the US, we are so typical of what that brings for all of us.
Time is up. Mr. Monas.
I agree with Mrs. Riley, 100%. I was not born here. It was very hard for me to comprehend English, comprehend school, to go home and not have that kind of help at home was very difficult because that's all we did was speak Portuguese and trying to get ahead and make things happen when, you know, I'm just growing up and trying to learn the American way and then trying to explain it to my parents. But getting through it, like anything, the, the best thing that I, the, the best experience that I had was having the teachers that supported me and guided me in the ways that they did when I was younger, to push me along and give me everything that I needed. And I just wanna be thankful for that the most because that's what changed my life.
Thank you. Ms. Stewart, please.
So, my mom is Cape Verdean and my dad is Portuguese, so I lived it for the most part, so I had both lived and grown up. A lot of my family is very, we have a melting pot, all of my cousins have, you know, they're Spanish, they're something, so I, it's literally my whole life. Most of them speak another language, so we have everybody in the house, everybody around me, everybody, so when you have that, you grow it, so everybody around you, all the kids, the little kids there, so I've lived it, so that's how I can help with it.
Thank you. Mr. Corey.
Yes, dear. So, in, in the Pledge of Allegiance, we always say it's justice for all. And in the United States, there should be opportunity for all. And public education works with all families across the board. And in the Fall River Public Schools, I'm really proud of our English language learner programming. We have so many kids that are very, you know, in that culture, that we're working and providing staff to forward their education in their, what do I wanna say there? For them to feel like a part of Fall River and a part of something. It's so incredibly important. And in my service, again, with the United Cultures Club, our focus was on dignifying all in their quest for education. I'm really proud of the Fall River Public Schools in their work around diversity matters.
Thank you. Back to my right, Mr. Dudek.
So I grew up in the Detroit area in the eighties and nineties, and while my entire school, everyone spoke English, I definitely had friends and classmates of a wide berth of different cultures. When my family moved from a different town in Massachusetts to Fall River, one of the neighbor girls was actually taunting my daughters about how nobody in Fall River speaks English, and my daughters were, as third graders, a little concerned, which gave me the perfect opportunity to sit them down and explain to them that, how much better things are when you realize that people are different than you, that people have different life experiences than you have, and all this does is make the community stronger and better.
Okay. Mr. Dias?
Thank you. Like Mr. Dudek, it's important, like on a personal level, I try and, I pride myself in communicate, in like befriending individuals from a wide spectrum of different backgrounds and beliefs. And I, and that's very important on a personal level. One of my best friends in high school was, he came from a, like a program from China to here, and we exchanged cultures. I visited, and I love learning new cultures. I went to Japan last year myself, and it's really important that we engage ourselves on that level. On a, on a school committee level, I think this is really important to make sure all, everyone from whatever your background is feels equally treated well in this district, and we're listening to everyone. And we have, I think we have some work to do on that. Just wanted to quickly respond. I forgot to mention the last question as well. With the emails as well, I also pride myself in following up on typically all emails.
And that time is up, please. Mr. Aguirre, take it away.
We have to respect all cultures, and we have to listen, and we have to learn from all of the diverse families that we have in, in Fall River. That's adults as well as children. One of the things that we just, a question that we asked before was about the curriculum. And I think what's happened, when we have a scripted curriculum that's evidence-based, it actually embeds cultural diversity within that curriculum. And I think that's a really good thing. So some of the things, we can't veer off too much, but if you read the stories that the children are reading in the schools nowadays, based on the new curriculums, they actually embed cultural diversity into the education. And I think it's important. I do think our diversity is actually a real strength of our schools, and I support all endeavors trying to make that greater every day.
Thank you for that. Mr. Malicone, please.
I think Fall River is an extremely diverse city, which I'm truly proud of, because I grew up with friends from all races, creeds, and religions. Me personally, my grandparents immigrated here from the Ukraine and from Italy, so that makes me half Italian, half Jewish, I guess. And I look Irish, so go figure. But, you know, I pride myself as a good Christian. My, my parents really raised us to not look at race or color, or, you know, to, to look down upon anyone else. I was always taught that if you point a finger at someone else, there's three more pointing back at you. So we were raised really well, and I'm trying to pass that on to my two sons, to really be open and nonjudgmental.
Thank you for that. Mr. Sylvia, please finish round six.
Yeah. I, after I left high school, I joined the US Army. And you, basically, were taught, you know what I mean, everybody's the same, and you need to depend on people. So if someone got into trouble, everybody else got punished. So that was coming from a small area. Fall River was a little bit smaller back then population-wise. And I just, with anything, I want to be treated, and I treat people the way I'd wanna be treated. So I think, and, and I've visited different places. It's, it's good to go to different countries and see how people actually live there, to appreciate that. And I think, I wish more people in America would travel outside the country to see how and where people are coming from.
Thank you. We start round seven now with Ms. Madeline Hargraves. Her first question will be directed to Mr. Monas.
Thank you. "Being a student athlete builds students' capacities relative to teamwork, discipline, breath control, stress management, speed, strength, training, and resilience. Would you consider recognizing participation in school sports as a way to meet PE credits? Why or why not?"
So, repeat the question one more time. I'm sorry. I'm trying to-
"Would you consider recognizing participation in school sports as a way to meet the PE credits?"
So, as far as school sports and activities after school, you want them to be part of a credit. I believe that should be part of a credit. I, I do believe the more we have kids participate and get together, the better they become, and the more well-rounded they are. And I do believe that we should credit that, and we should look into something like that to make sure you guys are getting credited all the way.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Stewart?
Yes, I do agree. And if you're, you're already out there, you're running around, you're doing all the activities. A lot of kids do more than one sport throughout the whole year. I agree that if you're out, already out there moving, the reason for, you know, gym itself is to keep you active, so if you're already active, then I don't see why not.
Okay. Mr. Corey?
Yes, great question. President Kennedy established in the mid-1960s the idea that children should have gym classes, because healthy body, healthy mind, that holistic thing. I grew up with a whole ton of great athletes in my time at Durfee and beyond, and that's a question that could be driven by the people in the ranks themselves, your coaches, your, your phys ed teachers. And they can drive that to become a big policy issue for the school committee to either approve or disprove. And I can tell you as this school committee member, if that came up and it made great sense, I would work to approve it. Great question.
Thank you for that. To my right, Mr. Dudek.
As someone who's actually not currently on the school committee, hopefully, I don't know how the state would feel about a proposal like that. But I'm definitely open to the possibility. In my high school days, I, well, I didn't play them, I was on plenty of sports teams. I do recognize that even beyond the, the athletic part of it, that being on a sports team, or in a, in a handful of other clubs and activities as well, again, not just promotes the athletic part of it, but reinforces working as a team, and the responsibility for your own assignment to make the team go forward. And those are all very important skills to be taking out of your schooling days. So again, I would, I would definitely be open to hearing more about the possibility, and, you know, if it's something that the state would approve, I would be okay with it.
Okay. Appreciate that. Mr. Dias?
I definitely believe it should be considered relevant around individual students, IEPs and whatnot. In order to get that implemented, you all go to Durfee High School, your principal and your superintendent are in the audience. I would encourage you to reach out to your leaders, and the process works, then it can come to the school committee, and we could take a vote there. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. You're, oh, I didn't cut you off, right? You're all set? Okay. Okay. Mr. Aguirre?
Yes, I do think that, as Mr. Dias said, we do have to take recommendations from the principals and superintendent and other administrators in their program of studies that does come before us. But we also have to take, keep in mind that our physical education teachers have a lot to offer our students. It is not just simply a get the balls, roll the balls out, and let the class go on. So our phys ed teachers do a lot of things with our students, how they work together, how they have to participate in different things and different skill sets. So I think we have to be very careful before we just determine that those students that are student athletes that can do that, they have the ability to do that, and their family, we can't just get rid of requirements, because there, there's so many things that a student can learn in physical education. A lot of times, there's health components as well, so I'd be a little hesitant to, to look at that, because I do think physical education is, the teachers and the staff have a lot to offer the kids.
Thank you, Mr. Aguirre. Mr. Malicone, please.
Yeah, hi. I think that's a great question. It, as, as a former athlete, I think time is critical. And if an athlete is playing in extracurricular, you know, after school, that, yeah, it could definitely count toward his PE. And mainly because I think they could use that time as a study hall time to get other work done. And as long as it doesn't decimate the, the entire class, you know, physical education teachers, like others have said, they definitely have a great role to play. And I don't think that students should go without physical education, but if you're already physical, physically active and playing a sport, you know, it might lessen injuries. So there's a lot of things that would have to come before that could be approved, but I would definitely be open to listening to that, and I think it's a great suggestion.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Malicone. Mr. Sylvia?
Okay, yeah. Maybe things have changed a little bit. When I was a kid, a younger in Durfee High School, a lot of kids didn't wanna go to gym. There were, there were some kids that just didn't wanna go to gym at all. So I don't see that being a problem, but I'd like to see that if somebody was involved in a club, that they were, they were doing volunteer work. I would like to see that also in, in that aspect, too. So, but I think it's a good question. I don't know if we could do anything with it, probably being a state requirement. I know when I went to Durfee, you had to pass gym to graduate. So, so, but yeah, I, I'd be open to what works for the students.
Okay. Ms. Riley, your answer will wrap up round seven.
Great. I have actually advocated for this at all levels. I think it's, I think it's a great opportunity for our students to be able to attain their PE credits while doing the thing they love. And the requirements for coaches to, to be a varsity coach are in-depth. They have to understand the team-building aspect, the strength and conditioning, to be able to monitor what students are doing within that sport. So I think it's an excellent way for students to be able to choose another elective from that huge program of studies that they can also connect with, and handle their PE credit after school through their sport. Now, I'm sorry, Mr. Aguirre, I did mention something important. I don't think that meets our health credits, so we would have to find a way to partner an opportunity for students to still meet their health credit. But for PE, I think it's an absolutely a great opportunity for our students.
Thank you for that. Our eighth question starts over here with Leisha Boone, and will be directed first to Ms. Stewart.
FRPS has a range of clubs. Given what you know, which clubs or activities stand out to you? And do you have any ideas for new ones that could appeal to additional students?
Hmm. New clubs. I don't know any new clubs. I don't even, I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't know all the clubs that you guys have. So I have a daughter that is 18, but she's out of district because she's, she has disabilities. So I don't know what happens at Durfee. I have no idea. So I couldn't even tell you all of the clubs that happen there, to tell you like things. So like, when I was in school, I did Amnesty International. I did all like, you know, those kinds of things. I don't know what you have there to tell you, you know, to do something different, you know, things. But do you guys have clubs that do services, like with special needs children? So-
Yeah.
Like unified sports?
Yeah.
Is that the ones that you have? Ones like that? So if you had any different ones like that, to connect more with those besides sports, 'cause not, just like every, not everybody does a sport, if you can get, add in some more of those, some other clubs that you can add other children in, you know, children with disabilities inside of them, or children with special needs inside of them, that, you know, it's not a sport. That'd be my one to add on.
Thank you. Good answer. Time's up. Mr. Corey?
I think a fun club could be music appreciation, being, you kids all love pop culture. You all have your favorite music. It'd be great to have a slate of different songs that you're all listening to, and sit there and analyze them socially, politically, in, in a very justifiable way, and see what you guys can continue to grow and develop, a whole better vision, not only for your community, but for the country itself, because that's the power of pop culture and youth in our country. So I would say music appreciation.
Okay. We'll take that under advisement. Mr. Dudek?
Okay, so I'm clearly biased here. I was in the marching band in my school. I went to school for music. My daughters, as I've mentioned, are at band rehearsal right now. I think every student should join the band. But as for actual, serious new club ideas, I have to admit, I'm not coming up with one on short notice. But what's more important is you're the students, you're the ones who are looking for new club ideas. And I think any idea, if you've got a reasonably small number of students, four, five, however many you would need to consider to club, if you can find enough classmates who share that same interest with you, and can find a faculty member to be the advisor for it, I really think that all new clubs should be coming from the students, 'cause they're the ones who are gonna be participating in it.
Thank you for that. And Mr. Dias, please.
No, thank you, thank you for your question. And when pondering upon it, I don't know if you would consider this technically a club, but as an organization here, and not trying to score any brownie points, but I really do love Fred TV, the digital media, and how that provides an outlet and a platform for students to learn many different things in the digital world, that is qualities that could be very useful going into this century. And, and maybe it's just me, I think just having media around, just learning more of media itself. I just think something really good that you could take out of it. For a new club idea, I don't know if this exists already. I see them popping up everywhere, and something I like as well, esports club, I'm assuming. Oh, wow, y'all don't have that? Well, that's something that should definitely be considered.
Okay. We have a new advisor then. Okay. Mr. Aguirre, please. New clubs.
Yeah, I think one of the important pieces is to make sure that there's a process in place to recommend new clubs at all of our schools through the administration. I would assume that something like that exists at Durfee High School as well as the other schools. So some of the clubs that I think we should look at, and I think Durfee does some of these, a community service, doing kind things in the community. We have so many kids that wanna give back. I think having a club where we kind of make it easier for them to do that and organize would make sense. One of the things in education I think we need to do more of is inclusion. Having inclusive opportunities for students with all different disabilities as well as culture, just have an inclusion actually be sort of paramount to the school. And I think having a club where they can do fun activities and experience different opportunities, I think that would make the most sense. Finally, something with real-life skills, entrepreneurship, things that students can actually get out in the community and run a club, but actually prepare themselves for college or the workforce.
Okay. Mr. Malicone?
So, I'd start off by saying that Jesus saved my life, but music helped to save me. And I really love the idea of what Tom came up with, because I was very big into poetry, musical lyrics, what they meant, how they affected me. And I think that's a brilliant idea. Also, I'm not sure if esports are the same as gaming. Is that the same thing? Okay, my bad. I'm sorry. I was gonna say gaming, because my, my youngest seems to be, he, he excels at it. It's kinda crazy. And, yeah, and let's see, I had one more thing. Oh, and stock trading. I think that children, kids, anyone can learn what companies do and how they're traded publicly, and they should learn more about trading equities so that they can grow up to have some money in their pocket, not worry about a 401K or social security or something that may not be there. So educating them would be wonderful in that respect. And I would volunteer to help with that as well, for whatever it's worth.
Thank you, Mr. Malicone. Mr. Sylvia here.
Yeah. You guys probably have the same clubs. Back when I was in school, ski club, golf club, Spanish club, but I would like, I mean, if you don't have this now, like a travel or a culture club, and also to tap onto Ms. Aguirre, I, I think the volunteer club would really be important. I'm a member of the Forest Street Tree Planning Program. I'm the youngest member at 61. So we're trying to get new people on board. And also, volunteering your neighborhood. Just, you know, if they do cleanup, stuff like that, I think it's really important. Some of the neighborhood groups in the past have had, like toy drives and stuff for kids. So I think if you can get involved, a lot of the people that are in these things in your community are getting old and tired, so it'd be really great to get some young folks involved.
Okay. Ms. Riley, please. New clubs.
Thank you. I was just thinking back to when my own children were here, and they belonged to so many clubs. I'm trying to think of something new that you don't already have. I think one of the things I couldn't think of that didn't exist, you have student government, but is there just a leadership club where students can learn those skills that will help them be successful later on in life, that will help them take ownership of their own advocacy, but also for groups that they might represent? One of the things that I, I love at my district, we have a music cafe, and kids can just come up on stage and sing, or, or, or play an instrument, or just a little band get-together. And I love all the creativity that it brings out, and also all the different students that come out. You always see a wide range, and sometimes students who you don't expect really blossom in that kind of piece. If we don't have something like Music Cafe, I guess that would be what I would throw out there as our new club.
Thank you for that. Mr. Monas?
New clubs. There's so much going on with the schools, with clubs and, and activities. Just bringing more positivity to different cultures and everything else, bringing people more mostly together, starting something new with the, with your peers, your friends, coming up with something different, as far as, you know, giving other kids- something different as far as, you know, giving other kids opportunities. That's a tough one because you guys have so much going on. And like Mr. Aguirre said, probably give back to the community and start a new club outside of school maybe, and just doing positive things for the elders and everyone else out there, you know?
Thank you. So that wraps up eight. I think we, this will work out perfectly. We'll have one last question, number nine. So, Mr. Corey, you'll answer first, so the numbers kind of worked out. And then we'll go with our one-minute closing. So, Mr. Dudek, you will be again first to finish our closing. Jack Rio, please, with question number nine, directed first on this end. Mr. Corey.
Now, all of us learn differently. So how can policies and resources ensure that all students, including those who need individual support, get what they need?
Well, that's a deep question, Jack. But I know that we have a comprehensive staff in Fall River, and I know that every student is evaluated and placed in programs that are appropriate to their learning capabilities. Twenty-five or more than 25% of our students are in special needs. More than 25% of our students are in English language learner programs, and the rest are, you know, in regular learning programs. And here at Durfee, you have comprehensive program of studies now with increased career and technical education opportunities, as well as all of the subject opportunities. And I'm really glad to see that MCAS is not a major requirement like it was in the past because maybe social studies could learn to live again. Because I really think social studies took a big hit during the tenure that MCAS was prevalent.
Thank you for that, Mr. Corey. Okay, back to this end. Mr. Dudek.
I know a big help would be for the students who are, who find themselves on an IEP. One of my daughters is on an IEP and has been her entire time here. And unfortunately, largely due to staffing concerns, she's only had her weekly services met about five to 10 times over the past two years. My concern there is that's, I am only aware of her situation specifically, but I also know from a logical standpoint, she's not the only one in this boat. Any student who's on an IEP needs to be, you know, they need to be assured that what they're on the IEP for is being met so that their needs are being met. And really, that's going to be a big help to any student who finds themselves in that situation.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Dias, please.
Thank you. And obviously, and I appreciate the question, and obviously there's a lot of different ways that we can approach this, so let's get through it in a minute. So special education, we just had a subcommittee meeting about this yesterday, going over some of the numbers and how we can better support our students who are in sub- separate classroom, inclusion classrooms and all across the way. And this is very important, I believe, on a special education basis, I believe we have the appropriate leadership in place, just making sure we as a committee support them. And I believe they do have a good strategic plan. And if you're interested, truly interested, I would suggest you reach out to the Assistant Superintendent of Special Education to get that, so we can go, so they can go over the specific details. In terms of policies, it's very important that we enforce our policies as well. I believe we have an issue in this district of enforcement of our policies, and that's something that's one member I'm looking to address with a new committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dias. Mr. Aguirre, please.
So this policy role on the school committee is one of the most important roles that we have. So our policy committee should be meeting regularly. We need to review all the policies so that if things need to be tweaked in any way, that we can do that. Relative to getting the resources, the budget is another piece for the school department. So when we have budget hearings and we have no questions asked to administrators to verify and justify why we want to spend money in this versus that, that's a problem. So as a school committee, as a body, we need to ask those tough questions. We need to scrutinize those budgets to make sure that the money's going to where it needs to. The special education is the biggest piece, in my opinion, for a lack of funding. The school committee, to their credit, has done better with that over the years, but we have to provide more support in our special education, both related services as well as inclusive opportunities across all of our schools. Students need the support in all subjects, not just English and math, and I've been saying that for years, should be across all grades and all different classes.
Thank you, Mr. Aguirre. Mr. Malakon.
Well, I tend to agree with what Kevin said. I think he put it really, really well. But I would like to add that the most important thing to me would be asking the teachers and the students the tough questions of really what's working and what's not helping at all. And I think that they need our support more now than ever because the work environment is changing. I mean, let's be honest, you have a big company like, geez, I can't, Salesforce. They had 9,000 employees, they just laid off 4,000. So where does that leave the workforce? Where does that leave our kids in the future for jobs? So I think it's super important that we, that we don't leave anyone behind. We don't leave any stones unturned, and we truly listen and try to make an active difference rather than just writing things down and saying, yeah, we hear you. Just get out there and do it. And that's something that I pride myself on, lead by example. And if you're not leading by example, I feel like you're part of the problem, not part of the solution.
Okay. Appreciate that. Mr. Sylvia.
Yeah, I mean, for kids that are not able to inform folks that they need help, I think we need to look back, relook at all the policies. And it's true, it's not probably a school department thing, it's a city thing that we don't always follow or enforce our rules, regulations. So I think that could probably solve the situation. As far as special education, I know it's getting a bad rap now, but I just looked at the vacancies that we have here in Fall River. We have 34 para positions, and I might be off a little bit with that that are vacant right now, along with 20 teachers. And I think the paras are pretty important. I'd like to see us do some things to get the para, to get people in here. And one of the things I think would be great is what they do with the teachers, pay them all year round, because I've heard that a lot from people, that they have to go look for another job in the summer. If we could extend that pay, and how much would that cost just rewriting a program, I think that would be helpful.
Time is up, Mr. Sylvia. Ms. Riley here.
I believe every student is poised to do impressive things. What they need from the adults around them is to help them goal-set and then provide the supports they need to be successful. I think as school committee members, our role is to provide policies that support that and help engage people in that work and to make sure that the budget aligns with those supports. I think we are going to have to be prepared to deal with quite a significant cut in education from the federal government, something that urban districts really rely on. And we need to be poised to look at our budget and find ways to pay for the things that we've been using grant funding to pay for, because those opportunities won't exist to provide supports if we don't have the funding to do that. So I think as a school committee, that's something that we have to be prepared for and that we have to work on when it comes to budget time.
Thank you for that. Mr. Monas, please, your turn.
Yes, like Mr. Aguirre stated, special education, just hearing that the lack of money and not having the resources that we need is a problem. And we have to really bite down and find out what we need, what the students need, what the teachers need, and start it at an early age and get a grip of everything and push these individuals forward to make sure they got what they need. And we're keeping teachers, we're not losing teachers, our staff, due to funding, whether it's crunching numbers or trying to figure out a better way of doing things. But we definitely have to support our staffs and our kids to make sure they got everything that they possibly need. It's all about keeping them where they need to be and having them grow in the right direction.
Ms. Stewart, please, complete round nine.
So I do have children that are, have IEPs, so I know that they have some things that, you know, they have issues with also. But besides that, I do, I have CPAC, and a lot of parents come to me and say that they feel like their children are left behind, that they do not have the services that they need. I know I think that our biggest problem that we have right now is that we have a lot of paras that are teaching because we don't have enough teachers, and I think that's the biggest struggle that we have with those. As school committee, I think that we just need to make sure that the policies are being taken care of, that they're actually being followed, and that state and federal law is being followed. And that's what we could do as school committee members.
Thank you all. We actually started with 24 questions, so got there about nine, not bad. Okay? We have our one-minute wrap-up now, our closing statements. Please speak to the students from your heart. One minute, we start back with Mr. Dudek here.
Actually, I'd like to thank Ms. Nickerson, Fred TV, and all of the student panelists for this opportunity this evening. I really appreciate it. I just hope that my goals of needing the students, families, teachers, and the entire Fall River community to work together to help the schools is resonating with you, but also with the voters of Fall River who are hopefully watching this. I'd like to invite anyone who has any more questions for me to feel free to find me on Facebook and reach out, or find my website at randyis.online. Always, all kinds of ways to contact me, they're available, and I will respond as soon as possible. Or if anybody else is looking for another opportunity, I am going to be at the Fall River Public Library Thursday, the 23rd, from 5:30 to 7:30. Just for a meet and greet, no, you know, no agenda, just come say hi, play some games, and just hang out and ask me questions. Otherwise, thank you again.
Thank you for that. Mr. Dias, please.
Thank you. And I also wish to thank Durfee High School, Fred TV, FRG, Fall River Government Television, and the members of the student government for hosting this forum tonight. Since joining the committee, I have been intense. I show up to all the meetings, even those I'm not a member of, and I put in the hard work day in and day out, and the effort into the position every single day. I ask the hard and tough questions, not only on stage, but behind the scenes as well. I believe with a new school committee, a newer school committee, we can continue to move to improve this district in the right direction. We still have plenty of work to do. I believe I give a voice to those who don't have a voice at the table and continue to advocate for everyone to have said voice. I'm asking for one of your six votes on November 4th so we can continue holding the right people accountable, implement the necessary reforms, and work to make things better for students in our district. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Mr. Aguirre, your turn.
I'd like to thank our students and Fred TV for sponsoring tonight's forum. And I'd also like to say, we're to thanks to the students for taking on leadership roles at the school. It is much appreciated and is admirable. Public service has been an integral part of my life, and I truly believe that I make a difference during my tenure as an elected official in each and every day. As a member of the school committee, I do my homework. I ask tough questions, and I advocate for our students and staff on a daily basis. I'm willing to stand alone if needed to support what is right for our students and staff. I have past experience working full-time as an educator at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, and currently serve as an elementary school principal. My passion for serving on this school committee is second to none, and I'm asking once again for your continued support. On Election Day, I respectfully ask for one of your six votes. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. Mr. Malakon, one minute.
I was going to ask Kevin if he has another one of those laying around. I just changed some names. So I didn't use ChatGPT to get ready for this. But I will say that the teachers, the faculty, and the administrators, and the students truly need us now more than ever, considering what I was just talking about earlier and the work environment and how things are changing and how fast they're changing. I don't really think people truly understand how the work environment is going to change in the next five to 10 years, and we're going to wake up to it, and it's going to be here literally tomorrow. So for me, giving them all of my support in any way that they need it, and also to let folks know that the greatest equalizer in our socioeconomic system is truly education. And the more educated and the more prepared you are to go out in the world, the better off you're going to be. And I don't believe that anyone deserves to be left behind. So if I'm elected, I'll be there for whoever needs me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Sylvia.
Okay, I want to thank the Durfee High School Student Government Panel and Fred TV for sponsoring this forum and inviting us. I would like to serve as your next school committee member to provide common sense solutions and to further get back to my community. I'm a product of a single-parent home. We landed here in Fall River, and I attended Morton and graduated from Durfee. After high school, I attended BCC, joined the US Army, and served two years there and three years in the US Army Reserves. When I returned home from the military, I began working for the federal government and served 40 years as an HR professional in the Navy, VA, and the Department of Labor. I have raised my family in this community, have been involved in my neighborhood association and the Fall River Street Tree Planning Program for 20 years. Many people ask to describe Fall River in one word, and I always say "home." I humbly ask for one of your votes for school committee on Tuesday, November 4th.
Thank you for that, Ms. Riley.
Thank you. Thank you to the students for inviting us. I appreciate the opportunity. I mentioned before, I was born in this city, the first in my family to be born in the United States, and I don't know if that's what created it, but I love this city. I grew up here, I married my high school sweetheart, we bought a home here, and we've raised our children here. We've been a part of the community, a part of so many youth leagues, I couldn't name them all because our kids all decided to play many sports and many activities in the city. And it was a busy, it was a busy life. But now that they're grown, I have the time to dedicate to public service, and I'm happy to do that. I've worked with public servants for the last 13 years of my career, and I know the powerful things we can do when we work together to improve our schools, and improving our schools improves our city. So I hope that you will consider me for one of your votes on Election Day.
Thank you. Mr. Monas.
Thank you. I want to thank the students here tonight and everyone else that put this together and all your questions. I just want to say I'm proud to be a candidate for the Fall River Public Schools Committee. As an immigrant from, as immigrants from Portugal, my parents came here seeking opportunity, and they taught me the value of hard work, respect, and education as the pathway of a better life. These values guide me every day. I have spent more than two decades working in the trades as a licensed master plumber, HVAC and sheet metal professional. I have also served as the maintenance director for the Fall River Public Schools. I know these buildings inside and out, but more importantly, I know the people inside them, the students, teachers, and staff who make our schools run every day. If elected, I will bring a hands-on, common sense approach to the committee grounded in the values I grew up with, hard work, accountability, and honesty.
Time is up, Mr. Monas, excuse me. Ms. Stewart.
Thanks, everybody who made this possible. Guys, great questions. Ultimately, I'm here as a mom. I went to BCC, I graduated UMass Dartmouth with my MBA. I worked at Letourneau for a few years before moving on to human services, where I spent the last six years helping families with children with disabilities. I also serve as a president of CPAC. Education means everything to me, so much so that I brought civics to life. A few weeks ago, I turned the carousel into a mini-election where I brought a voting booth, ballots, the kids got to pick and choose what their favorite animal was, what their favorite ice cream was. The best thing they got was an "I voted" sticker, because we all know that's the reason why we vote, so we can get our sticker. But I'm running as a parent's voice, but really, I'm running as a student's voice too, because I know it's important. You all deserve to be heard, supported, and set up for success. Just know when you go to vote on November 4th, please do vote. Please, everybody, go vote. Please consider me as one of your six votes. Thank you.
Mr. Corey, your closing, one minute.
Thank you to Fred TV for this forum. Thank you to the candidates here tonight for throwing your hat in the ring. Most of all, thank you to the students of Durfee High Student Government for your active role in bettering school and community. Thank you to the voting public for placing your faith and trust in me these past terms I've served. I always aspire to serve with my heart and to rely on my 30 years of experience as an educator in service to the teachers, students, and staff of the Fall River Public Schools. I humbly ask for the consideration of your vote on November 4th. Thanks again.
Okay, that wraps up our forum, but I want to thank our panelists once again, starting from my right, our class of 2026, Jack Rio, Jasleen Martinez, Madeline Hargraves, and Leisha Boone.
Yeah. Kids rock that, man.
Yeah, they're good questions, right? It's more difficult to do this panel, I think. I also want to thank our many students who worked behind the scenes. Fred TV students included Trevor Kamara, he is up there, a live director. Lamar So is our assistant director and robotics operator. Aiden White, also a camera operator. McKenna Borges is our photographer, and Farhan Nafi did a great job with our timekeeping. As we said, our race is for mayor and city council will also be decided on November 4th. Only one of our panelists here is 18, okay? That's Jack. Thank you. So please make it a point again to get out there and vote, get that "I voted" sticker, and join us on Fall River Government Television, Channel 18, for live results. We'll be reporting right from our Fred TV studio. And a note to the candidates now, our students did express an interest in meeting you informally. I explained that earlier before the I explained that earlier before the cameras went on. If you're able, please take this time now. I appreciate it. We're gonna cut our cameras, and anything you say and will now will be a secret. Okay? Thank you all, also at home for watching. Have a good night. Thank you. Thank you.